How about that? There you go. Welcome to the Cartersville City Council Meeting. If you'll please stand for invocation and pledge.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Cartersville City Council Meeting tonight. Let us bow our heads as I pray. Our Father, which art in heaven, once again will assemble ourselves in the seat of government of Cartersville, Georgia, to do the business of the city. All wise and all knowing God, we ask you for your guidance and your direction as we make just and true decisions for the best of our citizens of Cartersville, Georgia. We thank you for your grace and your mercy and the city that you have provided for us to live in. We thank you for all the mentorships that we have and the pledges that we enjoy. We thank you for this council and the heartfelt desire for us to do the right thing. Now come down, be in the midst of this council meeting that we do the will that you have set before us. It's in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Hagerwell, please.
Carrie Fies, Ward 1. Here. Jay Stapp, Ward 2.
Here.
Gary Roth, Ward 3.
Here.
Karen Cooling, Ward 4.
Here.
Gary Fox, Ward 5.
Here.
Melissa Cornell, Ward 6.
Here.
Thank you, Julia. First order of business is the approval of our council meeting minutes from September the 19th. And council, you've had an opportunity to review those for a few days now. Now would be an opportunity to make any corrections to those and if there are none to be had, a motion would be in order.
Motion to adjourn.
On favor of Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Menino, why don't you get us started this evening for Z 24-07? Or if you'd like, we could move it to the last item on the agenda.
That's all up to you, Mayor.
No, we're going to keep it right here. How about that?
All right. Thank you, Mayor. As you noted, this is Z 24-07. This is actually a second reading. We had the first reading two weeks ago. Prior to that, there was a planning commission meeting. The planning commission did recommend approval of this application with eight enumerated conditions. Since the first reading with council, there have been a few changes. The applicant has since submitted a letter stating they were willing to restrict this to an age or make it an age-restricted community and follow the guidelines of HOPA or the Housing for Older Persons Act. Additionally, there were some additional conditions that were batted around on that and I believe they will be placed up on the board in addition to what planning commission did recommend. The only difference is we also received a revised site plan since the first reading. It included the deceleration lane that was recommended by our public works department. It wasn't shown on the first drawing. With that, the engineer had looked at the setbacks and so forth and it did affect one of the recommended conditions, which was item number six on there, about minimum length of driveway to be at least 20 feet. We had said from property line, the applicant would prefer that to be a minimum length of driveway to be 20 feet from back of curb to the garage as opposed to...
Did, and I'm sorry to interrupt you, did you said that just impacted that one property?
No, that there's a length of driveway.
Right.
Length there, yes. It did impact that if...
Just that one piece of property in that development? Is that, I could ask, I'll ask them when we get to the hearing part.
Yeah, call will come up.
Okay.
And again, they could probably make it work either way, but to provide a beauty strip along with a sidewalk, they would prefer it to be from back of curb to the garage at 20 feet as opposed to property line to garage.
Oh, I see. Okay.
And like I said, with that, planning commission did recommend approval. Those were changes that have occurred since the first reading, being the site plan with the deceleration lane, some additional recommended conditions and the applicant submitting a letter stating that they were willing to do a 55 and older community subject to the Housing for Older Persons Act of 1995.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Menino at this time? Thank you, sir. Before I open up the public hearing, I do want to kind of tell you the way I would like to proceed tonight. I've gotten approval from our council. Obviously, when I open up the public hearing, the applicant will have an opportunity to speak and make their presentation. After that, some of y'all kind of saw a series of conditions that Councilman Fox had assembled. I'd like for us to go over that and perhaps have a discussion with the applicant about those conditions because their reaction or their answers to that may impact some of you that would want to come up and speak on an issue if it's already been resolved and you have your way, then we're respecting everybody's time in that way. So, that being said, I will open up a public hearing for Z 24-07 and ask the applicant to step forward and present.
Mayor, do you want to remind the potential speakers there are limited to five minutes?
Yes. Thank you for that. And if you do plan on speaking, there was a sign-up sheet. Did you already gather that? Or, no, again, somebody may have forgotten that. We'll leave that up and up there for now. Okay? Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Carl Luchens, 114 Old Mill Road. Pleasure to be here with you tonight again talking about the now a senior development at the Jackson Farm Pudd Development. So, Mr. Menino did state that correct. A letter was sent in by the applicant. The applicant, Smith Douglas Holmes, representative is here with me as well. I'm stating that we did write a letter. They are going to follow, they are going to create a HOPA, follow the HOPA guidelines and this will be a development that includes those restrictions and will be a 55 age-restricted development. That being said, we're going to the same things and we can talk about these conditions. I want to point out, there's two conditions in here. One, Randy, Randy did highlight on one and those are about the driveways. On our site plan, and that is condition number six, talks about the driveways being 20 feet from the property line back. Well, these roadways we have are standard 60-foot wide roadway. I mean, the right-ofways we put in there are 60-foot wide right-ofways. With that, that typically means they're 17 feet behind the curb in a 60-foot wide right-ofway. That's typically a grass strip that may contain a sidewalk or something. So, as I've gone around and looked and designed some of these senior communities, it is the character and nature of what they do is they try to, you try to bring your houses or homes because they're smaller closer to the roadways. The intent is not to have these long driveways where, you know, you've got people playing out in the driveways. It is meant to fit a small car out in the driveway. All of the driveways that we have shown on this plan are 25 feet from back of curb. I requested a 20-foot from back of curb in the instance that we have one lot or something that has an unusual circumstance. So, but they are all drawn at 25. I don't intend on moving them any closer. How did I get to that 25 number? That 25 number comes from the width. You measure the width of a sidewalk behind, basically it's seven, two feet for a grass strip, five feet for a sidewalk, 18 feet for a car. You get to 25 feet from back of curb. That is becoming a more common standard in today's world in which we design. We're looking at smaller, tighter spaces and how to make them work and less, obviously less to maintain, less upkeep. So, we feel like the 20-foot, although more than likely all of them will be 25, there may be an unusual circumstance and that gives me a small variable in the design in case that comes up. So, I'm not back in front of you trying to go through a rezoning because of number, the number 11 comment than anything changed as it comes back in front of the council. So, that is one request we're making that we'd like to adhere to is the 25, minimum 20, 25, 20 feet from behind curb. If the council has an issue with that, we'd like to hear that at this hearing. The second thing would be is that with now only 67 homes and they're all senior-type development, we have drawn in, I drew in, a deceleration lane so I wanted everybody to look. It fits, it fits in there. It actually fits within the current right-ofway that's out there. What we're probably going to have to do though, but what you see is that person now has, you know, asphalt on both sides of him and just 12 feet closer to his home. The bigger issue is there's, there are actually two nice trees out there we'd like to keep that are in that area that the deceleration lane would take out. So, what we would, even though we can fit a deceleration lane in, it don't have a problem doing one. What we would rather the condition state is that we would do a limited study that said if a deceleration lane is required per the GDOT, the Department, Georgia Department of Transportation requirements for right-turn deceleration lanes, if we meet that requirement, and that's so many cars per day that take a right turn in, then we'd be happy to put that in. However, our intent is to try to save as much of the area that's out there, create less pavement and not more pavement. So, if that condition could change to a condition based on a study or if there's, if the developer chooses to do no study, then we just put the deceleration lane in. And I believe that, those are all the, and oh, and one other thing, the area that does show a pickleball court because this is becoming more of a site plan specific, we want, we would like the ability to maybe modify that. We've, we don't, we've heard both sides of it. Some people want pickleball, some people don't. It more than likely may just be a smaller, open space area for the development other than having a pickleball court at that location. So, that is a minor change that we would hope that we can make without coming back up in front of the council. Other than that, I think we're all good with all the other conditions that are stated here. We would, at this point, I'd like to hear any comments or questions or answer any comments or questions from the council.
Mayor, before we go on, if I could, then on number two, what you would like that to read is that the developer to provide a deceleration lane into the development for Mission Road, comma, unless a traffic study per DOT standards says otherwise. And then on number, condition number 10, you would like us to add to that, you know, where we have the except for decreases in the number of lots or residential units or alterations to the streets and public right-ofway to after right-ofway there include and changes to the recreation area.
Correct.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure all the board members, council members had that information. Thank you, Mayor.
At number, at number six.
He was just handling those too.
Yeah. Number six had already been talked about with Mr. Fox and he already had that changed.
Relative to item six, Councilman Fox, you were fine with that change in the, in the distance?
My concern was somebody, some folks like Jace has a big old truck that would stick out in the road.
I'm not old enough to be in this neighborhood.
And we wouldn't let him in there anyway.
That, you know, you'd have trucks blocking sidewalks and such, but it sounds like to me, based on the length of the sidewalk, it's probably going to be okay. I mean, length of the driveway.
Yeah. So, you just want it measured from the curb and not from the end of the right-ofway? Is essentially what this is.
That's right, from the back of curb.
Yep.
That's correct.
Okay. I think that...
And I would like to ask Wade back there.
Mr. Wilson, if you would come forward, please.
Do you see any issue with the deceleration?
Yes, sir. Well, I'd just say, I don't know if we put a stipulation. Our recommendation would be to let us look at it and review it because it is a collector's street and by our ordinance, you would have to have a decel lane. So, if we go by the DOT manual, then it may not require it from a traffic point of view. So, we would like to be able to have that option.
But from our development standards, it would require it.
Yeah. So, we would like to be able to review it to be able to make that determination. So, I mean, and we would, so...
When you say review, review the study that they're going to do?
Yeah. And so, yeah, they would, if it goes to that, we would review their traffic study but also review the situation that we have, the design. Yeah, it's a full, full review of...
But what I'm hearing is that under our current development regulations, this development would require, would require a deceleration lane.
That is correct.
And so, by putting a condition where we don't require it, we're kind of turning it over to, we're going against our own ordinance to make an exception.
We do use the manual, so we both use both to make determinations. So, I think, you know, from our perspective, from public works, we would kind of like that be left up to determine, us to determine after review whether it would be needed.
I would like that preferable as well.
Then I think instead of having GDOT in there, just say Public Works Department. Deceleration lane will be required.
And that's, that's something they can determine administratively. It's, I mean, it's engineer stuff.
Yeah.
And that is something like, I mean, when you talk to left turn lane, I don't know that it would require that, but that's all part of our review. We're looking at the entire entrance.
Okay.
The generation changes, would it be in a 55 and older community versus it being a senior and presentable community?
That's correct.
Thank you.
So, basically on number two at the end, how you would want that to read, Wade, would be to just put a comma or semicolon after Mission Road and say, if required by Public Works Department after a review of the traffic study.
That's fine with us.
Yeah.
Thank you. You anything else for Mr. Wilson?
Not at this time.
Thank you. Thank you, Wade.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Mr. Luchens at this time? Carl, any of those changes or stipulations not agreeable?
No, from our standpoint, I believe we agreed all of them. I'm going to look back to Mr. Bennett. Yeah, so we're in agreement with all the other ones.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I know you'll reserve your time. You'll have a closing, opportunity for closing comments at the end of this. The people that are here, can you see and read all those 11 things or do we need to go through those? Mr. Fox, this is your baby. So, there's a few folks that don't here and I think for the record, it's important to have in the record what those 11 conditions are. So, I will turn that over to you.
So, I'm going to read these 11 conditions to the best of my ability after all these changes. So, the first one is fencing's building structures of any type and trees are not permitted within easements. This should also be placed in the Homeowners Association covenants, conditions, and restrictions. Number two, developer to provide deceleration lane into the development for Mission Road if required by Public Works after a traffic study. Developer to provide a flood study in accordance with the City of Cartersville Code of ordinances for properties in the flood plain.
Can I interrupt you right there?
Yes.
Just because there were some people this week, obviously with the heavy rains that were, that saw the amount of rain that was in there. That flood study is done by the developer, okay? That study is reviewed by the City of Cartersville engineers and approved. If you weren't here for the first reading, I wanted to make sure you understood that part of it. That will go under City of Cartersville review for approval. So, thank you.
And while we're here, Wade, could you come back up? I wanted, I talked to Wade about this, the pictures, because he's sending us photographs. And would you mind kind of telling the folks what you told me?
From the drone pictures?
Yes.
Sure. So, we saw the, okay, yeah, on the left side and the right side there on the lower. So, the condition from last week, we had about a 25 to 50-year storm event based on what we're kind of, what we're calculating in the area. And when we looked back at the Jackson Farm plans to see what 25 to 50-year storm looked like, it actually is really, really close to what we're seeing here in these drone pictures. So, just because the water goes outside the fence line, that actually is a flood plain down there. So, it was in, that, it did what it was supposed to do from what we can tell. I mean, we didn't measure specifics on it, but from these drone views, it looks very similar to what we would expect in that situation from Friday, from Wednesday through Friday because it was, it was a three-day event. So, I think that there may have been some concern that the water was outside that fence, but the way that pond was designed, in our view, is that it overflows at, I think it's less than 25 years. It'll, it'll go over and it's not, it's kind of more of just a holding area that overflows because once again, that entire area is a flood plain. And that is why when the development does occur in that area, we would have to review, review the flood study to make sure that there's a no-rise situation, that they don't make it any worse than what it is now. And we would be looking for compensatory cut field, which I will just say is more stringent than FEMA requirements. So, our requirements are more stringent than what the federal government would be.
And you might mention the certifications that y'all's department...
Oh, that our department has? Yeah, sure. I mean, we're, probably have 50-plus years of engineering experience between Stephen Foey and myself and so we're engineers and we are, I'm a certified floodplain manager with the, with the American Society of Floodplain Managers and Georgia Association of Floodplain Managers. And so, we have to take federal classes from FEMA to be able to get that certification. So, that, that's, I mean, that's one of our requirements because we participate in CRS program. That's one reason we do it also.
Thank you, Wade.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Number four, use single-story house plans submitted with applications, application, two-story housing products not permitted. Number five, include 10% rental slash leasing cap in Homeowners Association covenants, conditions, and restrictions. Number six, all driveways to be a minimum of 16 feet wide. The minimum length will be per concept plan and subsequently approved site plan. However, minimum length will be at least 25 feet from back of sidewalk.
I think it's 20 feet.
20 feet, sorry.
Yes.
20 feet from back of sidewalk, 20 feet. I told you I was doing my best.
You're doing great.
Number seven, developer to provide an additional landscape screen planted, which meets the requirements of City Ordinance Section 4.17 buffering screening requirements behind lots 1, 3, 4, Phase 1, Jackson Farm. Number eight, all streets in the development will be public and meet the City of Cartersville requirements. Number nine, the development will abide by the Housing for Older Persons Act of 1995, initially administered by the developer and ultimately administered by the Homeowners Association covenants, conditions, and restrictions. Number 10, the concept plan submitted with the application is made a part of these zoning conditions except for decreases in the number of lots or residential units or alterations to the street and public right-ofway and changes to the recreation area as approved by the City Public Works Department. Any other modifications will need to go through the city's normal zoning process and require approval by the mayor and city council. Number 11, these conditions of zoning are not eligible for a variance or if there are any proposed changes to them, they will need to go through the full zoning process and be approved by the mayor and city council. So, that's it.
Good job.
Thank you.
All right. That being the case, I will, we're continuing the public hearing for Z 24-07 and ask anybody who wishes to step forward to speak for or against to do so at this time. And if you would kindly, when you come to the mic. Come on up. Yeah, you're fine. Just if you would, state your name and your address for our clerk, please.
No problem. Good evening, everyone. My name is Joy Peterson. I live at 42 Jackson Farm Road here in Cartersville. Specifically, we're in Lot 1 on the subdivision. What I'd like to ask of you is an explanation to be provided by whomever. I don't know whom. Okay. We are in lots, we are in Lot 1 and there's going to be an easement, a drainage easement between the proposed Silo Point and our Jack, and our Jackson Farm subdivision. That easement, I need to know, and we are all, especially the folks in lots 1 through 4, want to know who is going to be responsible for maintaining that drainage easement. Is it going to be the City of Cartersville or is it going to be the Silo Point HOA? Please tell us because we, we have that question, all of us.
Mayor, would you like me to answer that?
Please do because I don't have a clue.
Normally, for most developments and subdivisions, it is the requirement of the property owner to maintain drain achievements. And since this hasn't been designed out, I can't tell you whether that's going to be the homeowners associations or if that's going to actually be an individual owner. There are some drain achievements, very few, that our City Public Works Department will actually require easements over that they will then maintain. As this project has not been designed for any of those things, I can't tell you at this time which of those categories this one will fall under. But, you know, it will, more than likely, I'd say 95% of the time, it will be maintained by the property owner, which for most drain achievements, they are reserved by homeowners association in this type of situation.
So, which homeowners association are we referring to? Silo Point or Jackson Farm?
I would be referring to the homeowners association for this development.
Oh, for this particular development that's being proposed?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it very much.
Great question. Thank you for asking it. Again, continuing with the public hearing for 24-07. Anybody else wishing to step forward to speak may do so. Thank you.
I'm a little bit taller than my neighbors and will fix the microphone. I'm Rebecca Owen. I live at 44 Jackson Farm Road and, which is Lot 2 on the map. I live next door to Ms. Joy. Mr. Fox, you get an A+ for your reading fluency this evening, so we thank you for that. So, I did just want to bring some attention to item number seven on the list of conditions. If we could put that back on the screen for just a moment. I need a cheat sheet. Thank you. Regarding item number seven, I just would like to ask the city council to consider revising the language they're in. It currently reads developer to provide an additional landscape screen planted, which meets the requirements of the city ordinance. I would like to request to see if the city might consider revising that to just, just include some deeper specificity with that regarding, you know, a screen could be a row of holly bushes that come up to my knee. I think what we at lots 1 through 4 especially would like to see is something that does, you know, as we've expressed in prior meetings, does maintain that semblance of privacy if it is passed by the city council. So, something along the lines of a robust and adequate landscape screen with vegetation and things that would be appropriate to provide that barrier.
Mr. Menino or Mr. Hart agree that part of the ordinance as far as buffering and screening?
Yeah. The 4.17 bumper screening requirements, I believe it has a minimum height, six foot, six foot at 20 feet, if not 20. Never green screen and it is reviewed, David. Landscape architectural, review that.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Does that...
Yeah.
Make you feel better about that?
Yeah. I'm 5' 11" and so that's pretty good. So, we'll take that.
That's good.
Yeah. Thank you for clarifying that. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Again, continuing with public hearing for Z 24-07 and ask anybody else who wishes to speak to do so at this time.
Hi. My name is Sheila Hernandez. I'm at 38 12 Oaks Drive in Cartersville. I would just like to take a moment to thank Mayor Santini, Gary Fox especially, since he is our board representative, and the rest of the council. I just want to say thank you for reading our emails, for taking our phone calls, for listening to our concerns and seeking clarification on this rezoning request. A lot of it had to do with maintaining the look and feel of what we have going out west on Mission Road. We bought out there, all, I don't know, probably 250 of us now have bought out there because we love what we're going into. And so, we appreciate that y'all have respected our wishes to keep that. I want to thank everyone in both Jackson Farms and the Reserve at Pettit Creek that all worked together to attend numerous meetings that we had with Smith Douglas. that all worked together to attend numerous meetings that we had with Smith Douglas, without Smith Douglas, amongst each individual community, and both together, we actually just met again as two communities this past Sunday. And all of the information that people gathered and submitted, the input, and just working together as a community to represent one area of the City of Cartersville. And then lastly, I would like to say thank you to Smith Douglas for working with the residents to come up with a plan that both is aesthetically pleasing and maintains the appeal of living in our area. You list integrity, integrity as one of your company values. Integrity is the quality of being honest and having strong moral principles that you refuse to change. After the last-minute change to the 55-plus community, your integrity was highly questioned. We are glad to see that someone in your company did hold integrity as a valued principle and decided to stand behind the committee that, and the commitment that was made to us as a 55-plus community. So thank you again, City of Cartersville came together, and I think we accomplished something. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak may do so at this time. And would the applicant care to make a final statement, please?
I do have a final statement. One, one other request. I hate to retract back like this, but I was talking to Colin. There's a quest that these streets be public streets. The intention right now is to make them public, they're all designed as public streets. The only concern is, it's like Bill's Pine Grove Road, they have, they're somewhat gated. Public streets cannot be gated and have a more private feel. Therefore, the, the streets would be designed as if they were public streets. But there are two things on, on these streets. One is the parallel parking that we would like to have done, which is not standard for a public street, and the potential, I'm not saying to gate this, if we can make a gated community work, and that's a desire, we want that flexibility. I'm okay with saying it's public streets, as long as we're, if we can condition the right to have parallel parking as shown on the plan and have this communicated. That's the end, I believe that was number, number eight. Oh wait, no, yeah, number eight.
I don't know that, go ahead.
If I could address that, I'll address part of it, I'll ask Wade to address the other part. With respect to them being gated, that if they are public streets, we cannot gate those streets. I would ask Wade if he would like to come up and address the parallel parking, you know, whether that's, whether that is something he can approve during the design phase, or if it's something that they're totally against based upon their design, or what, you know. He has standards for streets and all, and I don't suggest that I understand what they are at all.
Good.
All right, can we pull that up?
I'll be honest with you, I have not reviewed this section, this is Stephen's review. Sometimes you can put, there may be an option to put it parallel in a public street. There's a lot of areas, I know we did discuss this a little bit. It definitely looks like a private street project, and, and you're correct with Keith, with the gated community, yeah, that wouldn't be an option on the public side. And there are a few things you can do, especially for a senior development, that might make more sense to go private, but it still gets designed from standards of public streets. For most part, there's some areas there where you can kind of change things if it's private, but for the most part, it's going to drive like a public street, and it's going to have the safety features that a public street would have, but you.
The big difference is the future maintenance of the streets.
And from a public works standpoint, we would love this to be a private street from the maintenance end.
The, the parallel parking piece, it's in that top-left corner, correct?
That's correct.
It's.
It goes, it goes on the, on the north peak, there's a cross there, and then there's a road that goes north, yeah, as we have it there as well.
Is the width wide enough for our dumpster, our haul truck, is the oil and fire personnel getting out there?
So what we would be looking at there is to make sure that the full width drives that we would be looking for is, do meet that certain standards, and then that those parallel parking spaces meet the certain length and width that we have in our standards. So all that kind of, it comes into play, and we may be having a look. This is something if it's private, we probably wouldn't be quite as concerned that the location to those parking spaces to that intersection. If it was a public street, we have certain requirements there, too.
But you could address the parallel parking during the design phase.
That is correct.
Yeah, you, you would need us, the council, to give you advice on that.
Does, does one of the existing conditions allow for him to make that determination, or do we need to add that to one of the conditions?
No, I believe he can, now, there may be something in the zoning ordinance that prohibits parallel parking in subdivisions, is, there's not okay. Yeah?
Okay.
So you haven't reviewed parallel parking at this moment, I get it.
Oh, no, not yet.
Typically, if everyone wanted to do that, you would have a requirement for them to be sure that the, all the requirements were met, and that everything is in line. As long as they came to the table with all that.
As long as the road's wide enough, as if there was a house on the other side of the street, and that parking was wide enough to handle all that, then there's.
Right, it's, it's a little bit different for us, because we don't see, on a single, like a single-family residential, we would not see usually parallel parking, but it's.
I believe there is a standard in the development regs for parallel.
Okay, so as long as it meets the development regs, you'd be fine.
We would have had it.
Yeah.
Engineering discretion on that.
Okay.
But ultimately, this is what happens on those Tuesdays, is y'all sitting around the room and hash these things out, that you're going to regardless.
That's correct.
You write this down, or you do it, you're going to do it anyways. Right?
Yeah.
So in my mind, what I'm hearing is parallel parking, fine, as long as it meets whatever standards, and y'all hash that out on a Tuesday morning meeting. As far as, my preference is to have those roads be public specifically for the future residential development, when those roads need to be maintained, and that we just simply don't allow gated roads, gated and public roads, so. Anything, anything else for Mr. Wilson?
What's the difference between on-street parking and parallel parking? Because like, he could overnight park on, in my subdivision, any, all the time, and there's no restriction to it.
That's, that's correct.
Could they not, could that not just be it?
Well, if you have on-street parking, you know, I know there's, there's been issues with parking in the streets, it's, residents don't like it, because it may be close to a driveway, they block driveways. So then, the, when, when the residents get upset, they come to council and ask for the street to be, no parking on their street because of those situations, so, and that would be on-street, on-street parking. Sometimes it can be a problem, it depends on the neighborhood it's in.
But this, but this would actually avoid that from happening.
And a lot of time, neighborhoods in their homeowners' covenants address that on property owners.
That is correct.
They put in there that you're either not allowed to have overnight on-street parking, or no on-street parking allowed at all. And then the neighborhood enforces that against the various property owners in there, and the city is out of that particular issue.
But in this, in this plan, as I see it, if you, if Mr. Wilson said.
Well, parallel parking would mean, would mean you have a dedicated parking space as part of the public road, public right-of-way, is the difference. So what it basically means, and I don't know the numbers, Wade can correct it, but say a regular road's 24 feet wide, you'd probably have to, in that area where you have parallel parking, the road would have to be 30 feet wide to have the spaces for the parallel parking, you know, something like that.
So in order for the discussion to be had on a Tuesday morning between them, does number 8 need to be altered any?
No.
Okay.
So number 10 is where it's addressed.
Oh, I'm sorry, number 10.
Question, I think it was public versus private.
I think the public versus private, the question was public versus private. And I can follow up after what I've heard now.
So it still would be a desire for us to have the opportunity to make a private development with a gated community. I do hear the concerns about having private developments in gated communities, but typically, if that is an option to do, and I'm not saying that's what's going to be done, but it gives more flexibility as we move through this, and it could, could allow us to raise, raise the bar in the neighborhood, just as a private development as a whole. So it is a request and not a requirement to make our development work, but we would like to do that. And then the other thing that was mentioned, in a, in a senior development that is 67 units, these streets, although they are all designed, you know, 24 feet of pavement, curb and gutter, the whole nine yards, and they meet all the radiuses and turns and stuff like that, so if you're driving beside it, as, as Mr. Wilson mentioned, he may look at it and go, well, that parallel parking space is too close per regulations to this curb, don't really want to do that. But the nature and feel of what we're doing is not, not a highway, it's not, not even a large subdivision. It's a very small pocket community that we're trying to develop.
I would say you're trying to avoid having on-street parking, and so you're taking a step above, and I.
Correct, and, and we just, you know, for those few times we want to do that, and there's not a lot of space on this, if we, if you start developing to the full standards of all these parking spaces in parallel, they're more designed for, for roads, they're going to have a lot more traffic, and a lot more people in the area, and we're trying to, we're trying to minimize that to what's actually just needed for a small pocket community like this.
So I know the planning commission, one of the conditions that got sent to us that no longer exists was relative to those, to those roads being private and a, the requirement for.
They were requiring an additional performance bond and maintenance bond over and beyond the ones that would normally be required by the city through the development regulations.
So, so yeah, so if, if you do a public street, you put a performance or maintenance bond up when you develop the street, and you dedicate it, you have a bond in place. In a private street, you don't typically do that, because there's, they're not, they're not bonding to anybody, that they are the owners of the street, you'd be bonding yourself at that point. And I think that if we were going to make this public and have to do those bonds, and if we were to make it private and have to do those bonds, that's, that, we're okay with that condition as well, because that's a, it's a maintenance bond that would last 18 months or two years.
I don't remember the time here, didn't they say two years, the planning commission?
Yeah, it's what, and I think that's typical with what the city would require, so.
Well, again, I'm, I'm looking at 15, 20 years, when those roads need to get redone and they're private. It may very well be that Smith Douglas has moved on to other things or other places, and you've got an HOA that has 67 residents, and they come to the city and go, hey, we got holes in our streets. And we say, well, it's going to cost, you know, a little, about a million and a half, $2 million, everybody pony up about $80,000 and, you know, go ahead and get your roads done. So that's, that's kind of where my mind is. It won't be my problem, it'll be somebody else that sits in this chair, but I'm also thinking of those property owners that are, that are buying that. So again, that's where my preference is, but I don't always get my way.
Well, that, so, other than that, that was our only statement. I'm here to ask any other questions. We would hope that the council would find a favorable zoning in our request. Thank you.
Thank you, any questions for Mr. Lugeons?
I just want to make really clear, we all need to do any changes to number 10 in regards to their conversation on a Tuesday morning about parallel parking.
That is correct.
Okay.
And, this isn't for Carl, but, so we have, I'm just thinking, Old Mill Road, Pine Grove, and then Dock Ferry, we have targeted or restricted over 55 or whatever it may be, and those are all gated, right?
I think the Villas is only gated.
I think the Villas.
Hillendale is gated.
Hillendale is gated.
Yes, and those are private streets.
But we've had, I mean, have we had major issues with, maybe we can't be the, I mean, Matt, I think you.
No, I, I see where you're going with this, there is a history of both Hillendale and the Villas being in existence, gosh, Villas has been around for 20-plus years.
To my knowledge, I don't recall y'all receiving any requests involving paving any of those private streets in there. Wade may know of some, because they would probably come to his office, but.
I would think they would probably come to us first, before they got sent to the office.
Wouldn't that something that would be discussed when someone's buying their property? They would be told upfront, hey, this is a private road?
All things like that should be disclosed by a real estate agent when you, they are involved in your transaction, and the homeowner has a duty to disclose those. But I will just tell you, in the real world, they don't necessarily disclose that to people because they don't have to, because it is part of the public record. In other words, there's these restrictions in place, there's covenants that are in place on property. It's just like y'all had requests for people to come before y'all in the past, saying, I bought this property thinking I could build a McDonald's on it, but I, I now found out it is zoned for residential, would y'all rezone it? And you're like, and you ask them, well, didn't you, didn't your real estate agent check on that? They said, oh, they didn't mention that to me, you know, I mean, that's, that's what happens in the real world.
So I see what your point is, is, again, I'll kind of back off of that a little bit from the standpoint that if we've got a history of, of roads that are private, that, again, it ultimately, if I'm taking from Mr. Lovell's comments, is that, you know, it's really up to the HOA from the, the initial property owners to say, we need to be paying $1,000 or $2,000 a year into our HOA to build up a fund, so when the roads need to get done, or something does need to be maintained.
That is what should happen, yes.
Yeah, well, but, and we can't be the, we can't be the parents overlooking that to see that it does happen, that's.
Well, so I want to hear one extra, so is there something that we have as a city that if we have private roads, do we hold them to standards for our public service? If they're, if they can't travel that road, can we require the Villages or whatever to make that happen?
All roads, all private streets are to be built to city specifications under the ordinance. If, if there, if there is a situation where a street has deteriorated enough, the city can legally take action against that, against the owners of that property and require them to repair or fix that street back up to our standards. I will tell you, there is one current situation like that, that I'm aware of in the city, which is the Ingles Shopping Center on 41. There's a access road in there or something.
Between Dairy Queen and Van Star?
Yes, yes, that has deteriorated. Unfortunately, what happened with that road was, when the various property owners sold that road over the years, it remained in the name of the original property owner. And the original property owner is a corporation that has been defunct for 30 years or more. So there is no entity out there for the city to go in and take action with respect to them. So if, and the city doesn't really have a legal right to go on that private access road to do any work, because it is a private street. So, yeah, that is a type of situation that could develop down the road. Yeah, although homeowners' associations are supposed to remain effective, you know, by law, they're effective for 25 years, and then are, most of them are automatically renewable for another 25 years, you know. There's a time period where there may not be a homeowners' association with respect to any individual development. And there are also situations where homeowners' associations have gone defunct.
All right, so let's just go back to the original condition that the planning commission gave us, and basically that's going to be.
Be number 12.
Well, or we can substitute number 8 to read, if the streets are private, the developer will provide a maintenance bond for additional two years following the required maintenance period defined in the development regulations.
So in other words, how the maintenance period in the development regulations works is it's currently 12 months, though the bond is for 18 months to allow us to have a six-month period there to do any work that is defective. So in effect, you would then be having a three-year maintenance bond on that property.
I just don't want to get lost in the fact that they're asking to make it nicer with a private gate, and I'm, I'm trying to figure out how to make that happen, not make it where it has to be public.
That's just what we did.
Okay, well, I don't have that.
Oh, you don't have it in front of you. Oh, you don't have it in front of you.
But can we do this, because this is something, so Randy or Keith, some of these things we're requiring of the homeowners' association. We can put those requirements in?
Yes, we can require them to submit their covenants before they are recorded to be reviewed and approved by the city. And in this case, if y'all then-
We do that at the top of the line.
Because what I'm thinking is, hey, why don't we, to protect what Matt is worried about, which I think is a very valid point, that there's a fee in there that is set aside for maintenance of the streets, if they stay private. Mean it?
You could do that.
It'll be in the language, if it ends up being a private street, there'll be language in there about the future maintenance.
Okay.
And earmarked money for it.
Not necessarily earmarked. Normally, those decisions are made by the actual homeowners' association, though there's nothing to say you can't have a-
That board could make that decision, but we can't.
Yeah, that board could make that decision. Or y'all could require that to be in there.
Ultimately, Smith Douglas could write it in, and five years later, their board votes that out and changes it.
Not really. Once homeowner covenants are adopted and put in place, they can't really be changed unless you go through a quite lengthy process. It's not just the primary owner of the development can change those.
I'd like to get out of the weeds.
All right, we got you out of them.
Okay.
Okay, so you heard me replace number eight with, if the streets are private, developers provide a maintenance bond, so, or so on.
Wanted to say, yep.
Yeah, because they may want them to be public. Gives them the option, if the streets are private.
Okay. All right. Well, one thing we have not done to this point is close the public hearing. Given the conversation you've been privy to, do you have any further comment or question or request you find with where you are?
Very good.
Okay, thank you. At this point, I will close the public hearing for Z 24-07, and you've got that look in your eye, what?
After hearing Mr. Fox's eloquent reading of his conditions, I did realize that the way I worded, reworded number 10 is probably incorrect. What I would like y'all to do on that is add the recreation language after the word City Public Works Department, and then put comma and recreation areas, just because I know Wade probably does not want to be approving or disapproving recreation areas. It's not part of his job.
Just for clarity, can I get Gary to read all those again?
Gary, talk to what you wanted to say.
Huh? No, 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 no. Gary wrote all these. I did not, I commented on them, but I did not write.
So I'll accept that change to my number 10 condition?
Yeah.
And I would like to make, if you call for a motion-
Is there any other discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
I would like to make a motion to approve this rezoning with the 11 conditions that I read to y'all with the change recently by Keith and the change about the private versus public streets.
Okay.
Second.
I've got a motion of second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, and thank you for the comments. And I will say, this is how local government's supposed to work. I know when you're seeing something on a state or national level, it may not look that way, but it's our job as residents of this community. People came to us. I want to thank Smith Douglas and their team for working with the neighborhood, and certainly our staff that, and Councilman Fox in particular, and with all the council for their hard work on this. Again, it's supposed to be set up to be collaborative and so that everybody walks away with a piece of a victory, and I think we accomplished that here tonight, so thank you for that. You are all required to stay for the rest of the meeting. Actually, we're going to take a five-minute recess, and then we'll get back to the rest of the business. That'll give everybody here an opportunity to not be here who doesn't want to be here. So we are in recess. Five minutes.
That is correct, but in the real world, that does not happen a lot, and that was pointed out prior to that, that there are duties for them to make disclosure, but hey, honorable state agencies do not necessarily-
Thank you, appreciate your help. Yes, nice to meet you too.
No, I said they, a lot of them do not live up to those requirements. Yeah. Yeah.
Some, there are some that are very good and they disclose everything. There are others that are bad, disclose everything they are meant to disclose. That is something that you can possibly have a cause of action against that, and then like, yeah. Yeah. Right, yeah.
He called me out.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so y'all, you know, y'all may very well have to consult a Georgia real estate attorney and see what you can do. But I do not, my understanding is Georgia, that does not require class X.
I'm glad we got great counsel there.
I stand by that.
Fox said-
I got a roll for sure. This is glad to see him. I went to go up for him. It was like a 39, 30.
Yep. About a year to him. Wow, they were on that. And I looked at him. And we get done with reading it. It was like, yeah, sorry, I was just on the roll. I didn't even take it. I actually think I was, yeah. Who was the two? Left and right. Cole, Cole, remember? I was going to get some cars. Man, he just started. My shirt, my shirt.
Yes.
They had this all figured out.
Thanks, nice to meet you too.
I read it, I read it. Been discussed anyway. Yeah. You know, next time, unless you're man protesting, you can make the same decision. Everybody want to move anything off the consent agenda? Nope, those are approved. The whole agenda is a protest. It won't last long.
Possible climate change. And that's true. And, no, yeah.
I want to fall asleep sometimes at times, though.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. And I'm raising those.
Yeah. There's going to-
How do we know if we're doing any good?
Yeah.
I said, we never even get by.
There will be a lot of changes to mandated development regulations. That's two lines to call.
Tell them what happened.
We have been building this with the new mark, new areas.
We are at the end of our five-minute recess, and so I've got to get us back in order here. So.
I can't do it.
So we did have a five-minute recess, and so we're going to stick to that, and we're going to call this meeting back to order. And I've got to figure out where I am. We got the first reading of ordinances. Tom Reinhardt has been ready in the bullpen, warming up the voice here. Come on, Tom, get us cranked back up. That's what I would like to call the speed round.
I'm the mayor and council. This is the first reading of the fiscal year 2024 budget ordinance amendment. After completion of the fiscal year 2024, year-end close, the general fund, special revenue funds, and SPOSS funds budgets need to be amended. The process of amending these budgets is done annually. I'm sorry, I got new glasses on.
You want Gary to read that for you? He's really good at it.
Let me hold up a little bit closer. The process of amending these budgets is done annually before the year-end close, and will bring the city general fund, special revenue funds, and SPOSS funds back into compliance with generally accepted accounting principles. These adjustments reflect the necessary changes needed to bring the budgets back into balance with revenues equal expenses and mirror the actual year-to-date revenues and expenditures in each fund. This is the first reading, and there is no vote tonight.
Thank you. Any questions for Tom on this first reading of the budget ordinance amendment?
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on, and Mr. Wilson, you are up next, as if we haven't heard enough from you already. Thank you for being here, and that, a lot of heavy lifting there.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Yes, it's been a long time since I've seen you, so. Okay, first one, CRS recertification. This is our annual recertification to participate in, which the CRS is Community Rating Systems, to qualify for reduced flood insurance for our community. We need the signature, mayor's signature to this recertification document. Public Works recommends his signature to that document.
Okay. Thank you. Any discussion? If not, a motion's-
Motion to approve.
Thank you. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, Wade?
Thank you. Yes, next one is envisioning, we did discuss a transfer station to be located on Alatuna Dam Road next to the water treatment plant. We are now in a situation where we're recommending moving forward with a preliminary engineering report and supplemental of our own DRI, which is a development of regional impact, for this proposed transfer station. At its, we are recommending to enter in a contract with Harbin Engineering. This engineering firm specializes in municipal solid waste facilities. They're proposing to form the preliminary work to add a not-to-exceed cost of $12,000. We recommend the mayor's signature of this, as well as future DRI documents that will result from this report.
Motion, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, that's right, you have to-
Know this work? No, I don't on this one. That's in a minute. Though this work was not budgeted, Public Works proposes funding these professional services through excess of our operations budget.
Thank you. Motion to approve is in order.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Wade, if you would please handle these next two items on the agenda, six and seven, together, and we'll just vote for them at one time.
That'll work. So we have two items that are both ARPA projects. The first ARPA project is engineering services for various pipe locations. We've discovered several pipes throughout the city that have deterioration and in need of repair. We're proposing to do this through cured-in-place pipe and spin casting. That way, we're able to repair the pipes without getting into tearing down houses and things like that, or roads. And so we propose to do that. The consultant that wishes to do that, would like to do that, is Barge Design Group. They're agreement for their services to provide us engineering, as well as bid documents. It's for $45,085. The next item that I saw is our project, is Fight Street, Herring Street, stormwater improvement. So we've seen flooding in this area through the years, and we would like to do a design, a stormwater improvement in this area. We're proposing, we've contacted CTI, which is Consolidated Technology Inc., to do the engineering work for this. They are a local firm. Their services could be provided for $48,900. So both of these items are ARPA projects, and so this is where we got to state Keith's requirements that Public Works would utilize the American Rescue Act funds for this project in order to qualify for these funds. We feel that this project would help our stormwater division manage, reduce, and recapture stormwater drains that would result in reducing flooding at this location, or the various locations in the pipes, and therefore, both of these projects would meet the requirements and eligibility of ARPA funds. Both of these items are budgeted. And we recommend approval.
Thank you. Any discussion? Chair will entertain a motion to approve both of these items that are ARPA-funded.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Wade?
Thank you. Yes, next one is envisioning, we did discuss a transfer station to be located on Alatuna Dam Road next to the water treatment plant. We are now in a situation where we're recommending moving forward with a preliminary engineering report and supplemental of our own DRI, which is a development of regional impact, for this proposed transfer station. At its, we are recommending to enter in a contract with Harbin Engineering. This engineering firm specializes in municipal solid waste facilities. They're proposing to form the preliminary work to add a not-to-exceed cost of $12,000. We recommend the mayor's signature of this, as well as future DRI documents that will result from this report.
Motion, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, that's right, you have to-
Know this work? No, I don't on this one. That's in a minute. Though this work was not budgeted, Public Works proposes funding these professional services through excess of our operations budget.
Thank you. Motion to approve is in order.
Motion to approve.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Wade, if you would please handle these next two items on the agenda, six and seven, together, and we'll just vote for them at one time.
That'll work. So we have two items that are both ARPA projects. The first ARPA project is engineering services for various pipe locations. We've discovered several pipes throughout the city that have deterioration and in need of repair. We're proposing to do this through cured-in-place pipe and spin casting. That way, we're able to repair the pipes without getting into tearing down houses and things like that, or roads. And so we propose to do that. The consultant that wishes to do that, would like to do that, is Barge Design Group. They're agreement for their services to provide us engineering, as well as bid documents. It's for $45,085. The next item that I saw is our project, is Fight Street, Herring Street, stormwater improvement. So we've seen flooding in this area through the years, and we would like to do a design, a stormwater improvement in this area. We're proposing, we've contacted CTI, which is Consolidated Technology Inc., to do the engineering work for this. They are a local firm. Their services could be provided for $48,900. So both of these items are ARPA projects, and so this is where we got to state Keith's requirements that Public Works would utilize the American Rescue Act funds for this project in order to qualify for these funds. We feel that this project would help our stormwater division manage, reduce, and recapture stormwater drains that would result in reducing flooding at this location, or the various locations in the pipes, and therefore, both of these projects would meet the requirements and eligibility of ARPA funds. Both of these items are budgeted. And we recommend approval.
Thank you. Any discussion? Chair will entertain a motion to approve both of these items that are ARPA-funded.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Wade, if you would please handle these next two items on the agenda, six and seven, together, and we'll just vote for them at one time.
Thank you. And we recommend approval.
Thank you.
And we recommend approval. 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 And we recommend approval.
the remaining tennis court. Additionally, they will apply a fresh coat of acrylic resurface over the courts along with two applications of fortified acrylic color coat. Wind screens will be installed on the north and south ends of the courts and the proposal also includes 325 linear feet of right-way crack repair. We sought bids on September 12th from Talbot Signature Tennis Courts, Southeastern Tennis, and Courtmakers. By September 23rd, we had received three proposals, but Courtmakers indicated they would not be able to complete the project this year and did not submit a bid. Talbot is the lowest bid and will be able to start this month for a total of $37,992 and this is a budgeted expense at $45,000 to be taken from the operating expenses and we recommend approval.
Thank you. Questions for David on this? If not, a motion.
Motion to approve.
All in favor to get the saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Papst.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Parks and Rec is looking for approval to award a bed to Game Time for construction of a, construction and installation of a 13-by-19 cover over the existing back patio of the Dodger Park concession stand. Game Time is the lowest bid. That price comes in at $22,435 and it is a budgeted item.
Thank you. Any discussion? If there's none, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
All in favor to get the saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Eric, Mr. Roberts.
So I have the pleasure of seeking approval to award Reeve Young as a construction manager at risk for the, for the recreation center. We opened the RFP for the Seymour services on July 12th, received 13 proposals. The Seymour Proposal Committee reviewed and graded the 13 proposals and narrowed it down to four. Those four finalists were Reeve Young, Gay Construction, Hogan Construction, and Carol Daniel Construction. We interviewed those four firms and decided on Reeve Young. As you know, Reeve Young has completed quite a few projects for the city of Cartersville. They did, they have a proposal of 2.25 is a CM construction fee and for a grand total of 1.367, 567, I'm sorry, 565 as a total for their construction costs. So the staff and the Seymour Committee recommend approval.
Thank you. I know that it's a very competitive process. I know y'all did an awful lot of vetting. I know you concluded staff and members of the community and so I applaud you on the process and getting to the, this step of what's going to be a great thing for our community. So, that being said, I will turn it over to Council for consideration. A motion would be in order.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor to get the saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Stay right there.
Yeah, before you step away, this is obviously your last meeting with us, but for 18 months you've been here and you've done a tremendous job for us. I know the mayor and I have spoken to you several times that what you came into and what you're leaving it with is in way better hands. And I know talking to several of your employees, they are very appreciative of your leadership. I'm very appreciative of your leadership and your style of management has been tremendous for us. So thank you very much. I know you're looking forward to working from your home city, but you have done a tremendous job for us and I do appreciate everything you've done for us.
Thank you.
Do do that.
Thank you.
Well, it's been my pleasure, I promise, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Does he get to take that cake home or what are we doing?
No, you can't.
I don't, I don't want that. Mike, Mr. DeLeonis, you're, now you've got to follow all that up, so good luck with that. You've got six items. Let's see what you've got.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Water Treatment Generator Bid and Award. The water treatment plant expansion project will require the replacement of two current generators. Our engineering consultant, Weidemann Singleton and their subconsultant, has issued their request proposals for two new generators due to their expected long lead times. We recommend awarding this to the lowest bidder, YNC Power Systems, for a total price of $3,933,536.30.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
All in favor to get the saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item.
Next item is the meter resetter purchase. Many of our existing water meters need to be changed to AMI and, and it has half-inch services, which requires a resetter adapter to install a three-quarter inch meter in the setting. We need about 150 of these fittings. Consolidated Pipe and Supply Company has submitted a quote for these fittings for We recommend approval for this purchase.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
All in favor to get the saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Second reading of chapter 7.5 of our development regulations.
Yes, there are no changes since the first reading.
Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
All in favor to get the saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Keep going.
All right. Bio solids drying services agreement. As part of the wastewater plant expansion, we've evaluated options to more effectively handle disposal of 16,000 wet tons of bio solids produced at the plants each year. Drying the solids will reduce the number of truckloads and increase our storage capacity. Storcore Services has offered to provide bio solids driving as a service to the city. So I recommend approval for this contract with Storcore.
Thank you. Any discussion? If there's none, a motion is in order.
Motion to approve.
All in favor to get the saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Altitude valve change order number one. Due to the aging condition of the critical water lines at the Morning Side, Fairview, and Tank Hill, Tank Sites, a project change order is requested. The work includes 20-inch yard piping, adding 200 linear feet of water pipe at the Fairview Tank and removing the altitude valve at Tank Hill. The total requested amount of change order is $200,000, $255.83 with additional, additional time of 90 days to substantial, to the substantial completion due to material delays. I recommend approval for this change order.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
All in favor to get the saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We're going to go back to the construction inspection services agreement, please. That's okay.
What question do you have, Mayor?
What questions do I have?
Yeah.
I didn't think we, we didn't approve that one.
No.
We skipped that one, didn't we?
Well, he covered it. Oh.
We went from bio solids to the change order is the way I look at it.
Okay. Yeah, and Storcore, that's right. That's correct.
Yeah. That's okay. I do that at least three times a meeting and they got to make me go back, so don't feel bad about it.
Sidney gave him a lot of work time.
That's right.
So, there you go. All right. So both of our expansion projects are currently in design and these are major expansion projects which require constant and diligent inspections. And IRS is the, will perform the, is the company that will perform the construction inspection and they have completed, they have inspected the recently completed wastewater expansion, I'm sorry, project that we had. So we recommend contracting with them directly for these expansion projects.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor to get the saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Good. Thank you. Mr. Morgan.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. I'll bring before you the low-income heat assistance, L-HEEP agreement that's administered through the state and they utilize Talatuna to handle the project and we're asking for approval of that so we can enter it in this and allow that our customers to utilize those services.
Thank you. And again, we approve this, the funding goes directly to Talatuna, everybody applies through Talatuna.
Yes, sir.
They do not need to come through the city. They go directly there.
And then they will, they will provide the means to pay on the utilities as a function.
Absolutely. So Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
All in favor to get the saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. And while you're here, if you're, if you have the paperwork for the, the added item to the agenda?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor and Council. Provided the proposal data, the cost data for each one of the two and we're wanting to move forward or asking to move forward with Penn Construction as a construction manager at risk for the depot renovation. They would handle the first floor renovation and also the restrooms, HVAC, all the other pieces that we're moving forward with. And that's the design and everything that the architect's working on and as they finish the construction documents, we'll be able to move forward.
Okay.
And also as Keith mentioned, I'd like to, as part of approval of the contracts up to the city manager, city attorney reviewing this and just note that these funds are coming from our Torreson Product Development Funds.
Yes, TPD fund.
Thank you very much. Any discussion? We're going to vote on it. Chair will entertain a motion?
No, motion to approve, sorry.
All in favor to get the saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Freddy, Mr. Porter, you've got a couple and then we'll handle that added, well, are you handling? Anyway, yeah, you handle your two.
The health and vision renewal for 2025, we've got a renewal increase from Anthem. Initially came in at 12%. We talked to our broker, we got it down to 8% renewal on the health side. The vision actually is under rate guarantee for three years, but we are renewing that one as well. Recommend approval to continue with Anthem for 2025 for the employees' health insurance.
Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
All in favor to get the saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item.
For our retirees over 65 that are covered on United Healthcare Group Medical Advantage, Medicare Advantage Program, we did receive a 44% rate increase. We were able, through negotiation, to bring that down to a 23% rate increase, but I am recommending for approval to continue with United Healthcare for 2025. And most of these clean changes were from the federal government administration, basically adopted some increase in Medicare plans, so we're being assessed those by the federal administration and to pass those on.
Thank you very much. Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
All in favor to get the saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Lovell, you have the last two.
Yes, Mayor, the first one is an agreement between the City Manor Restorations LLC and Aston Atlanta Residential involving the relocation of a, some sewer lines and drainage ditch areas for the leak walks at Waldorf Road. And it is recommended by staff for you to approve.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
All in favor to get the saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. And last item for you, Keith.
The next item, Mayor, is a sanitary sewer agreement between the city, the school system, and the Shirley involving the relocation of a private sewer line between their property on South Avenue and Irwin Street.
Thank you. Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
All in favor to get the saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Not so fast, we still have a few things here. Do want to take just a moment and wish our Jewish friends a Happy New Year as they celebrate Rosh Hashanah today, started last night. Thank you to our city employees. We were very fortunate. We see the devastation in Augusta and other places and it still hit me, the realization that till very late in the afternoon or evening, that was, that was supposed to come through Cartersville, Georgia. And, but despite the fact that we didn't see the damages that a lot of other places are dealing with and the devastation, we still had our issues and we still had, as we always do, our city employees through public safety, our utilities, and every single one of our 380-plus employees step up to the challenge and do a great job and get us back up and running and looking good. So I want to make note of that. And then, Mr. Porter, I know you wanted to say something, but before you do, sorry, I had to do this. Today celebrated the groundbreaking of Yakult, which is the leading beverage maker or producer in Japan. They'll be part of Highland 75 Industrial Park, be about a two-year project, a probiotic drink. And so today was a good day as we welcome further investment and more quality jobs coming to our community.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to thank the citizens, obviously as the mayor alluded to, we were fortunate on Hurricane Helene, but we were able to send some of our electric crews down to the city of Douglas. There's some pictures up there. Also, our fire department sent a crew down there to same area, Cofe County, and was able to help with search and rescue down there. But the citizens also came through because we are doing a hurricane humanitarian truck to North Carolina. We had one of our employees, Dexter Higgins, from our Public Works Department, who has family there, brought to attention Wade Wilson and the word got out. As Wade shot me a text a little while ago, we have at least 150, 150 cases of bottled water, 224 cases of alcohol wipes, 13 large moving boxes of hygiene items, 17 garbage-sized bags of clothes, 78 boxes of cereal, and numerous other items that are being donated and being delivered there hopefully by tomorrow afternoon. But want to thank the citizens for hearing the call and helping others in need.
Well said. Is the owner of the business, needs to come for the city?
Yes, sir. Hello, city council members. My name is Jason Trainer. I'm a hard-working taxpayer. I live in Cartersville, Georgia, 18 Burke Hickory Connector, 30132. And I want to quickly talk about the bio fire that happened in Rockdale Country, Georgia. And a few questions for the city council members. When this company had 18 violations, as I read in a news article, and they've been repeatedly violating safety measures in Georgia. My question for the public and for city council members, do you do a thorough background? If a company violates safety policy and the workers' rights to be safe, do we keep on not doing anything about it or passing a buck? Or do we tell a company that has violated safety standards and workers' rights to say it's okay to keep on operating that way? Shouldn't it be a standard in Georgia as saying, once you violate public safety and protection, just a few times, we're going to slap you with a fine, but if you keep on doing it, we should pull your permit? So you learn not to put the public at large. What worries me in the city council members, re-rubber stamp businesses come into Georgia, 95% or more. Do we do a thorough background of in the past, have they committed violations to the public and being a business that they operate here in Georgia? Do we take the public safety very seriously or do we rubber stamp all the businesses that want to come in Georgia? As I read this article in Rockdale Country, Georgia, I think there was over 17,000, or under 20,000 people had to vacate and move out because of smoke and the chemical plant and the harm that they did. They had over 18 violations in this news article of them keep on doing the same thing. So is there any other company that operates here in Georgia? Are they repeat violators of safety, public, and the workers that work for that company? So before we rubber stamp a company that comes to Georgia, let's look at their safety record and let's look at if they're protecting the public as they ought to. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other business that needs to come for council this evening?
Chad Hollander, live at 16 Roll Lake Cove. Alan Jeffersons was originally coming tonight to talk about a proposed development that's[1744.11] that's going in the back parking lot of Jeffersons that I think will be bad for the downtown businesses. It's condos that, you know, the original proposal would take up half of the back parking lot. Looks like they're not gonna be able to do quite as big as they thought they were gonna be able to do. There's this parking agreement. Not sure what all council members know about it, but in 1997, all those businesses or properties there donated their parking. What, most of them donated. The city paid $5,000 for some of it, and that all became public. And I guess currently, the, the property was owned by Josh McWharter, closed on the 30th. Now is owned by this developer. McWharter was under the impression that he owned, if you know where I'm talking about, the Red Barn and the banklot there. McWharter was under the impression that he owned all the parking spots parallel to the chain link fence and alongside the Red Barn loading docks there. After looking at this document tonight with Matt and Keith, it looks like the city actually owns those parking spots along the chain link fence and along the Red Barn as well, right? Or, I'm not sure if that's-
The way I, when I looked at that map, and when Mr. Lovell pointed out, I believe it's just along, as you said, the, the east side. I guess the side that's on the, where the bank teller side is. The other side, I, I don't believe that's the case for the other side.
Yeah. So, those parking spots, I guess, would get to stay in. Maybe this proposed development would only go in that banklot there. I would just like to say, that's a perfect spot for the city to buy that piece and make that parking as well. Not sure, you know, what this new developer will do, or if there'll be a big fight now that he might own less than he thinks he does. But, you know, parking is a premium down there, and I just don't want to see something go in that, that takes away from that and makes it harder than it already is. You know, any loss of parking down there will hurt. Just with the Leek Street, Irwin Street construction, and our parking lot being halfway compromised, right, the impeded traffic going in and out, and the loss of the Chamber parking at night, my sales are down $10,000 a week. It's painful. Then, through this process, I found out that the DDA has been talking to the Chamber about selling their property and redeveloping that. So, you know, it's been said that that would, oh, that's not gonna happen anytime soon, but that's a huge chunk of parking that just losing that at night, combined with the road construction, has cost me $10,000 a week in sales. So, as a downtown business owner, it's not comforting to even think that it might be gone in five years. So, with $700,000 condos going in over there, somebody proposing more condos right behind Jeffersons, the Chamber will be the next thing to go. And I just hope that the city is thinking about parking in the future, or, or has a plan to secure some of this parking for the future, because, yes, people will walk on Friday night to get downtown to eat, you know, here or there, or whatever, but they will not walk at lunch, right? And lunch is 30 percent of our business. I'm assuming it's the same for Coastal, and Sweet Market, and Mellow, and all of us. So, any loss of parking back, that back there is going to affect parking in the square as well. And if that parking goes away, I don't know where the folks are gonna walk from, right? There's nothing else really close. So, um, there's a bunch of business owners down there that said, you know, couldn't make it tonight because of the downtown event, Blue Sky, DeeDee's here from Jordan Scott, The Cigar Bar, Mellow, Jackie from Appalachian Grill. Just about 10 folks that I talked to quickly about this, 'cause I just found out about it a few days ago. They're all very concerned, wanted to be here tonight, couldn't make it. Can make it on the 17th, if y'all want to hear from everybody. But it's a concern, big time, for all of us. If, if we don't have enough parking, we just can't do it. On an average week, I'm serving somewhere between 2,800 or 3,500 people. And it's been eye-opening to see the disturbance back there, as small as it is. They can still get into the parking lot from Irwin. They can still get in by the pharmacy. And it's dropped sales $10,000 a week. So, you know, it just doesn't, it's not comforting worrying about the Chamber, worrying about this, you know, thing going in the back and, and, and taking up parking. So, trying to make it short and sweet to not take up any more of y'all's time. I did want to read this one quote, just looking real quick, from a, a quick parking study that I found. There's a bunch of them out there. It says, "The International Parking and Mobility Institute estimates that each on-street parking spot adds $20,000 annually in revenue to local economies. Parking drives economic development, perhaps more than ever in today's urban resurgence. Free and plentiful parking can certainly be a big draw in attracting shoppers to small businesses, while limited parking can push people towards big-box retail." So, we make it hard to come downtown because there's a lack of parking. They will head to a place over by Walmart that has a giant parking lot where you can park anywhere. So, if we want to keep them coming downtown, you know, we have to have parking, especially for lunch, right? We can say they'll walk, and they will at night, as long as the weather's good, but folks will not walk for lunch, and without the lunch business, Jeffersons in that spot is not viable. So, thank y'all for listening, and I'm surprised how hard y'all worked tonight. It's impressive. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for being here, Chad.
If I could say something. Chad, when I was looking at your drawing there, although the drawing shows that parking area along there as, you know, to be covered under the agreement itself, I, I read the plat as it said Track C was owned by the city. And looking at the plat, I was thinking that was Track C. And I just pulled it up and looked at it. That is labeled as Track G. I'm not sure whether Track G was conveyed to the city or not. I'll look, I'll look that up in the morning and find out. But the information I had that I forwarded to y'all concerned tracks A through F. So, I'm not sure exactly what the status on Track G is, but I will find that out, and I'll, I'll send an email out to you, Carrie, and Matt, and y'all can distribute it to the people that have inquired about that to you tomorrow.
Well, and, you know, i-if those parking spots aren't safe, that's, you know, that's a big deal. There's probably 25 spots along those chain link, along that, well, the chain link's gone now, but y'all know what I'm talking about, that, that we're alongside that chain link. So, i-if, you know, there's an easement that goes between the Red Barn and the, the banklot. If that gets collapsed down to just that easement, I don't know when y'all have looked and if you pay attention as much as I do, because it's, you know, it's right there. But we got two dumpsters that are on the property of that Red Barn right now. Without those two dumpsters, we can't make it through the weekend. And that's with the two regular, those are two cardboard dumpsters. That's with the two regular dumpsters and the one cardboard dumpster up right behind the local. My grease trap has been on that banklot for 15 years. So, if condos go in, in between the Red Barn and the banklot, and there's just the easement to get through there, we're gonna have a problem with food trucks, right? Those, they come in semis, and sometimes the food truck comes the same time as the beer truck, which is another semi. I don't know how that's gonna work. I don't know where the dumpsters are gonna go. I don't know where the grease traps are gonna go. And on a Friday night, I have 17 people clocked in, just for me, right? They can't park at the Chamber anymore, but I can almost fill up the back parking lot, what will be left, with just Jeffersons employees. So, you know, it's death by a thousand cuts. We lose those. Couple years later, Chamber's gone. I, I, you know, it's gonna, it will be a tough spot.
I'm not saying I don't hear, 'cause you know I do. We've, we've chatted a good bit about this today. The, I, I will mention that, again, when we get our new city hall done, there will be another line of parking. That'll be another 71 parking spaces. So, there'll be some addition here. I know the parking deck downtown during the day doesn't do you an awful lot of good, so we kind of cross that out, again, with people walking.
Yeah.
Again, I would still contend, we don't have a parking problem. We got a, we got a walking problem, but that doesn't, again, you're, you're putting it in monetary values that, quite frankly, I understand your concern, but-
Yeah. And, and again, dinner, totally different animal than lunchtime, right? Lunch, folks got an hour, they ain't gonna walk. They just, they don't.
Yeah.
So, you know, thank y'all.
Thank you.
I'm just having so much fun. I just like to stay-
I don't blame you. Hang out.
But, so, I've always said this, and, and, and I'll ask you, since you're standing here, but where does your staff park? Do you direct them to go to the parking garage? Or do they just park wherever they can find a spot?
Well, we used to do the Chamber, but now you can't park there at night. A big chunk of our staff is young girls. I don't feel cool asking them to park in the parking deck at night. So, you know, currently at night, they're in the back lot. I don't know where else to tell them. The Chamber's closed after eight, so they're not parking there. During the day, the parking deck is full, so no staff is parking there. During the day, they park over in the Chamber lot. At night, they park, you know, right behind us. 10, Sunday through Thursday, and 11, Friday and Saturday. The Chamber had a problem, 'cause they were having to clean up all the trash from the local. I've been back to the Chamber, like, let me handle that. I'll make sure that doesn't happen again. Please reopen this to us. And I think Cindy's, you know, there's some discussions going on there about that, but I don't know where that's at right now.
If you'll, if you'll hang out before y'all want to get some contact information from you, okay?
Okay.
And we'll look, and I'll get with Keith, and we'll look at it and have a conversation. I know there's several people that's reached out to several council members, and we'll try to get all those names and gather some more information. Obviously, the plan will go through a plan review, but we'll try to see what we could do and get some information from you, so we can have a contact conversation.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Thanks. Yes, Carrie?
I'd like to mention that today's my wife's birthday, so I'll take some birthday cake home.
You take all of that home. How about that? Yes, Chief?
I'd like to give this to Lovell opportunity to record one of our employees. Well, I'll do it again if you want me to.
Please do.
We had a citizen contact us, saying that one of our dispatchers, Sarah Ridwinger, went over and beyond to assist them the other day, and just wanted us to recognize her. So, I'm informing y'all of that.
I tell people we get way more, at least I do, I get way more compliments than I do complaints, and by and large, it's because of people like her that go above and beyond every single day for our city. So, we appreciate those efforts and love to hear those compliments, so. Anything else? You sure? We did good tonight. Falcons are tied at seven apiece. Oh, are they? Okay, well. As they say, you never know. Can I get a motion to adjourn?